At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for May 22nd, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apparently. City Clerk Deaton, please let the roll call show. All council members are present. And we'll move on to the approval of city council minutes, May 8th, 2023. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll move the minutes.
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. No bills this evening. Onto the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Dil.
I'll move the agenda as presented.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Tonight's consent agenda, CDBG Resolution and Oakland County Transit Reimbursement Program. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you. I move the consent agenda as presented by the mayor.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have a proclamation this evening on Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in South Lyon, Michigan, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas, every day, 100-plus Americans are killed by gun violence and, on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. Whereas, protecting safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility. Whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas, mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas, by wearing orange on June 2nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel L. Pelchette, Mayor of South Lyon, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of South Lyon, and I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of human lives. With that, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address and remember our two-minute time limit.
Hello, my name is Anne Anderson and my address is 7-800-RICHARDSON ROAD, WEST BLOOMFIELD, MICHIGAN. I'm here to support the others here from South Lyon, to thank you for issuing the National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation and urging the citizens of South Oakland to wear, or, sorry, South Lyon to wear orange to honor the gun violence victims and survivors. This is a growing problem which affects almost everyone in some way or another in this area and in the United States total. So, again, your support is really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sharon, the Executive Director of Active Faith Community Services, and I thought I'd come today and talk to you a little bit about our statistics from April, because I'm going to try to do that once a month. So, oh, the big thing I wanted to say is thank you to the community. We did the postal drive two weekends ago, and all the neighbors put out food and the postal drivers came and dropped it off directly to Active Faith, which is, by the way, unusual. Usually, it goes to the big food banks, trickles down to us, but everything from South Lyon to New Hudson comes directly to Active Faith, and we got 8,000 pounds. So... We have had, in the month of April, 200 families that were served, meaning they got groceries and help in other ways. The total individuals was 550 and the number of children, 200, and that's about how it is pretty much every week we see. Today, we saw 110 families that came through. It's a beautiful thing to watch. I do invite the council members. I know Steve and Maggie has been by and come on by. Alex from, has come and visit us, especially on a Monday, and anyone in the public who needs help with groceries or just support, please stop in and see us. It's the most loving, warm, amazing place you will ever experience in terms of lifting you up onto a better life. And we've got more surprises coming in the future. We're working really hard at making an example of our physical space to represent our hearts, and I'll be talking about that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Benson, 438 Washington Street, South Lyon. I live right there facing McCady Park, and I sit out now that it's nice and warm, and the park is full of people. People cannot read or they do not think they're going to hit people. Cars come down Washington Street, they get to the walking trail, they drive in the walking trail to turn around. The track team from the middle school was doing their run in the afternoon. They had to stop for a car turning around in the walking trail. I'm really concerned. There was a two-year-old on a little two-year-old bike. His father ran after him because he was in the walking trail. A car came right and did a turnaround. I'm really concerned about the people, and now that it's warm, the park is full. I'm ready to crochet a long string and tie it on the two posts, and maybe they'll think, "Oh, I can't break that chain." I don't know. I've talked to the police, but I'm really concerned. And also, I want to acknowledge Steve Kennedy for being such a great South Lyon citizen. He does so much on Facebook and everywhere else. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to discussion of downtown with the big return of our DDA Director, Nate Mack.
Thank you. Yeah. All right. To start off, the farmer's market season has gotten off to probably its best start that we've had. I've spoken with the market manager and a couple of the vendors as well, and they said that their sales are way better than they have been. So, that's, that's great to see. For this upcoming weekend, we have six food trucks, again, for Saturday. That's going to be another food truck rally, so they'll be there for the duration of the market. Ladies' Night Out took place on Friday, May 12th. There was a couple of new additions, some food trucks for the event, as well as a DJ. The picnic tables, again, were placed in the road, and it was, it was a pretty good event. For the garbage can lids, I got some clarification on the delivery for the garbage can lids for downtown. In my report, I had said 30 weeks, but good news, it's going to be only 16 weeks. So, I don't know. I don't know what the, the holdup is, but yeah, so 16 weeks on the lids. The flowers for downtown are going to be dropped off tomorrow. I believe they'll be going up probably Thursday or Friday this week. And then, the business survey that we sent out to our businesses, I'm compiling that information right now, getting that into a format that is going to be digestible for people. We've gotten about a 15% response rate, so that's, I think, about 30 businesses responded to the survey out of about 200. So, that is it for me. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Dil, go ahead.
Thank you. Just in general, what are the kind of things that you're asking the businesses?
How long have you been in business? What are your biggest needs? What are your biggest obstacles to business, to your business now, in the future? There's about 30 questions, and then there's a portion for just, you know, any comments that people might have as well, so...
And the only other thing I was going to say is, I think I mentioned it to you or not, but, you know, Ladies' Night was really great, and everyone I talked to just loved having the DJ there so much. Not only, you know, there's a little dancing being done, but also, it would, it made a more festive event, even in, when you're in and out of the stores, even, it was just, it was really great. It's a really, really good addition, so pleased about that.
All right, thanks.
Good event.
Councilmember Hanson.
Well, one thing that I did want to put on your radar to maybe start thinking about with the road constructions, the projects that are coming up, especially, you know, downtown Sonic Trail. Brighton downtown is seeing a big issue with, you know, the construction of the Main Street, downtown Brighton. They actually just rolled out a Believe in Brighton campaign, full website for their downtown businesses, as well as to drive extra business throughout the construction period. So maybe it'd be something to start kind of thinking about, maybe even, you know, reaching out to the city, you know, City of Brighton and checking with them and seeing if maybe we can adapt that for our big projects, so...
Okay. Yeah, if I may?
Yes.
So when I worked in Jackson, we actually had a huge downtown construction project. It was infrastructure, streetscape, and we worked with our downtown businesses to, you know, get information out to them, let them know what was going on. So I, I have worked on something similar to that before, but yeah, definitely looking into what Brighton's doing. I mean, we can, you know, copy that, what works well for them, and, and yeah, we can go from there, so...
Luckily, we got a couple of years, so I figured I'd, you know...
Definitely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Nate, do we have a projected timeframe for removing the lights from the trees that were discussed at the DDA meeting a month or two ago and storing them and...
So, I don't know if we're going to be removing the lights from the trees. We're looking at hiring a company to come and, I guess, put the lights on professionally so that they're not kind of, you know, mishmashed in the trees. So yeah, I guess, no, there's no timeframe.
All right. Thanks, Nate. Welcome back.
Thanks.
Fire Chief report, and this is going to be a good one, with Chief Thorington.
Good evening. I was actually going to say nothing to report. We are currently at 527 instances. There were, just came in a few minutes ago. Our ladder truck did arrive three days prior to the event, the open house. It's a nice-looking truck. It's had a lot of attention. It's not in service until June 9, 10, 11, when the vendor is sending down their trainer to certify us in the vehicle. So on the following day, it'll be in service on the 12th, so we're looking forward to that. It is full of equipment, kind of stocked, ready to go. It's, it's all ready, just needs a training, so it's good to go. The old ladder truck did sell to Plainview Fire Department in Georgia, sort for 22,5. The timing is good, at least it, one comes in, one goes out, so it's, that worked out. As far as the police and fire open house, it was a huge success, bigger than even I had hoped for. I'd like to go through a list of vendors who volunteered, made donations, and provided services that, it would not have been near the event without them. So I'll just run through real quick. Wonder Jump provided blow-up games for the kids. They had that whole end of the street down there. Hadley's Towing provided a van for live extrication for the demo, and then they came and hauled it away. The Magic of Jonathan Le Chance, he was walking around doing magic tricks for the kids. Peter's True Value provided a couple cases of bags for the gifts that we gave out with fire helmet stickers, badge stickers, pencils and all that. Snowy Owl Shaved Ice provided ice, flavored ice for all the kids at no cost. Sponge Sugar donated cotton candy tubs to us that was handed out to all the kids. We had face painters, Dana Johnston, Mac Dobby, Sarah and Brooke Schultz, and that was a huge hit. We had huge lines going out through the station the entire time. Lake Street Cruise and Motor Fest donated funds, which we used to purchase coloring books, so it went in the gift bags. Brighton Area Fire donated a live burn trailer, which let us do the demo with the sprinkler, non-sprinkler fires and the effects of that. Hamburg Township Fire donated the, or loaned us the smoke trailer that the kids could go through and learn to get down low when the smoke rises. The Kiwanis still providing and preparing and serving hot dogs and chips, and the crowd was so much bigger we even anticipated, ran out of hot dogs. And Cory from the South Lyon Hotel was there, and he ran out and grabbed more for us, so he provided hot dogs and buns. And then really, our fire marshal, Brad Moynihan, if, he's our brains behind the whole thing, all the planning. I was telling Nate that he's got somebody else in town now as event planner. We did an excellent job, and then we could have done with all the firefighters and officers and the people who volunteered their time and, and were there working, so it was a great event. Hopefully, next year, we're going to tweak it a little bit and make it even better, and I, I think I heard Brad say, "We're going to take the entire Main Street at some point." Maybe not that big, but, but yeah, it went really well, so...
Excellent, excellent. Anyone got anything for Chief?
No, just...
Yeah, no, great job. It was incredible. We were able to pop in for a little bit, and it was, it was even more than I expected with, with the truck out, with the full ladder. 100-foot, it's more than you think. It's big.
It's a long ways up there. Yep.
I wanted nothing to do with it. Thanks, Chief.
Yep, thank you.
Great update.
Thank you.
Move on to Chief Baki and the Police Chief report.
I was talking to Chief Thorington. I've got truck envy. What a, what a great, great time we had at the open house. Just echoing, again, Chief Thorington's comments, it was a really great event ourselves. We, we did take out our pickup truck, as well as some vehicles. We, we did end up handing out about 300, over 300 goodie bags to the kids. It was a phenomenal event, and good, good job, Brad. He did a great job, phenomenal. Set it up really well, so thank you for that. Just a couple of little things that I have. Our patrol vehicle, still no word on it. I'm looking at other dealers that might have availability coming up sooner, so I'm still working on that. Hopefully, it'll be probably the same, about the same price as the vehicle that we ordered, but still no word on that. We conducted our scenario-based training, simunitions, down at the water plant last week. Officers went through some situational, situational types of training, which we use, utilized simunitions, and that went really well. Did, had the opportunity to go to the Citizens Police Academy graduation dinner. Mr. Kennedy was there, appreciate it. Councilman Kennedy, thank you for joining. I urge everybody who wants to learn a little bit more about the police, on what they do is, is to go ahead and go through that program. It's really valuable. You learn a lot. People enjoy it. And then our, we did get our new P-25 prep radios. Those are all in. Also, all of our chargers and accessories are all in, so hopefully, when we're online, I'm guessing at the end of the summer, they're supposed to start getting these out, we'll be ready for it. And that's all I've got.
Excellent. Anyone got anything for Chief? All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
It is 7:47, and we will open the public hearing on the 2022-2023 budget. Thank you. Correction. 2023-2024.
At this time, we can take any questions at the public committee, or if anyone wants to comment regarding the public hearing.
Thank you. If no one, no one looking to make a comment, we will close the public hearing at 7:48 for the 2023-2024 budget. We'll move on to unfinished business this evening, which is also the 2023-2024 budget. Excuse me. All of you have received the 23-24 budget document. Tonight's meeting, we held a public hearing for the budget. After the public hearing, you will consider the approval of the millage rate resolution, also consider the approval of the budget resolution. We've attached the millage rate resolution and the annual budget resolution for your review, and under two separate motions, we approve or not approve. Now, take any comments you may have regarding the budget. Patricia and I are here to answer any questions, or if you want to just go directly to the motion. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the millage rate resolution as presented in the packet.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dil. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Yes.
Dil?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd like to go ahead and make the, the motion to approve the annual budget resolution.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Moser. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in another roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Patricia, for being here. New business number one this evening, professional services agreement for audit of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023 financial statements.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, we are here to review the annual professional services agreement for audit, which will end 6:30, 2023. Plant Moran has been asked to do the engagement. So tonight, we have, they, Plant Moran will be performing an audit for fiscal year June 30th, 2023, of the financial statements. They'll assist in drafting the financial statements and any related notes. The approximate cost of the engagement this year will be about $70,000. This service agreement includes a 3% increase from last year, which I would like to state the year before, they gave us a 5%, so we did a little better this year. And that also includes whether or not there is a need for a single audit based on our federal grant awards. So tonight, I'm asking to approve or not approve the professional service agreement by Plant Moran to perform our audit services for the city for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, and I can answer any questions about the service agreement.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. I move to approve the professional service agreement by Plant Moran, P-L-L-C, to perform audit services for the city of South Lyon for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, supported by Councilmember Moser. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in another roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. New business number two this evening, McCady Park playground equipment.
Parks and Recreation is recommending the purchase of musical playground equipment for McCady Park. Both pieces of equipment are interactive musical instruments, drums and chimes. Several of the playground equipment companies catalogs were reviewed and compared for prices in comparison. There are similar pieces of equipment, but each company has their own unique look, size, color, and product. I've attached a cost and information on the playground assembled, the chimes and piano drum rain wheel from Burke Incorporated. Tonight's possible courses of action, approve or not approve the purchase of the musical playground equipment from Burke Incorporated for McCady Park, and it costs not to exceed $14,318.
Councilmember Dil.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the purchase of the musical playground equipment from Burke Incorporated for McCady Park, not to exceed $14,318.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dil, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Yep. Thank you.
That's all right.
Good catch, Councilmember Kibble. Motion passes. New business number three this evening, CSX encroachment agreement.
The city of South Lyon is constructing improvements to its sanitary sewer system, which improvements include an extension of its sanitary sewer main and improvements to portions of the existing sanitary sewer manhole and sewer lines, including in an area through property commonly known as 415 North Lafayette and 606 Lakewood Drive. The materials attached tonight is a copy of facility encroachment agreement with CSX and possible courses of action tonight to approve or not approve the attached facility encroachment agreement between CSX Transportation Incorporated and the city of South Lyon. I, I can answer questions, or the city attorney here is also available to answer questions if you have regarding this agreement.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the attached facility encroachment agreement between CSX Transportation Incorporated and the city of South Lyon.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Moser. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. New business number four this evening, purchase of garage building for cemetery.
The DPW is requesting the purchase of a 12-by-20 garage for the South Lyon Cemetery. This building will be replaced in the building of DPW demoed earlier this year. This is a budget item for the current fiscal year and is available in four to six weeks from Jim's Amish Structures. The funds for this purchase will be coming out of Cemetery Perpetual Care, account number We've attached quotations from Jim's Amish Structures, the DPW building, a Home Depot garage kit, and Liberty Residential Construction, and the photos of detail of those selected buildings. Tonight, the possible courses of action are approve or not approve the purchase of garage storage building from Jim's Amish Structures and use of a mule to set structure for the cost of $12,789 from GL account 209000972. And yes, I did say that, use of a mule to set the structure. Be happy to answer any questions over here. Jeff Archie is also here from DPW.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Just a, a point. May I address the city attorney?
Please.
I don't know if this is the former neighbor of mine or not, but I did not call to find out, so I, I just, I may know this individual. Conflict of interest for me to abstain from voting tonight?
I don't think that's a issue.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Assuming you can be unbiased in your decision.
Well, he has a good product. You know...
Councilmember Dil.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the purchase of the garage storage building and mule use from Jim's Amish Structures for the cost of $12,789 from GL account 209000972.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dil, supported by Councilmember Kibble. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Anyone got anything on the budget tonight? Okay. We will reopen the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address and remember our two-minute time limit. We will close the floor for public comment and move on to the managers' report this evening with city manager Zellner.
Just an update regarding the Hagador sanitary sewer and road paving project. Utility contractors will be out in the next few weeks, working on some preliminary work, and we are expected that the project will begin in, in July. The, we did hold an additional public, public informational meeting last week. We had 20-plus residents and attendants asking questions regarding the project and how it will be moving forward. I do want to advise everyone that this project will be commencing soon, and the working hours of the project will be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Upcoming council agendas, we'll have on the approvals for the Christmas in July and also the Pumpkin Fest events. The trail construction, we held a pre-construction meeting on the trail improvement for Volunteer Park to Princeton. The project is scheduled to begin this week, and will be completed by 1st of July, weather permitting. I also updated council last week on the Semcog planning grant. We're working with Lyon Township and Milford Township on attaining a 50,000 future planning grant for our combined Huron Valley Trail system. I've also had preliminary discussions with the township on replacing the crosswalk signal at the trail crosswalk at 11 Mile Road. I've also had preliminary discussions with the township on replacing the crosswalk signal at the trail cross- crosswalk at eleven mile road. And I do want to commend the police and the fire department for the, as Joey coined the phrase, the event this weekend, so we'll be using that in the future. But it was a great event for everybody. Happy to see all the public out for that and a lot of people in downtown, um, at the farmer's market as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have tonight.
Councilmember Dil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will, a couple of things on the trail. Um, where we're fixing the trail where you were, um, you were concerned about the, um, it kind of sliding into the water there. Uh, will there be any kind of fence or anything there?
Yes, there is. There is a split rail fence along that area.
Okay, and then the other question I had is, I know that it's not on any schedule or anything, but the trail, the or the the bridge that runs along eleven mile, um, you know, on the way, like, if you're coming from, uh, Martindale towards the high school. Uh, it's, it's in, there's a several, um, planks that are just kind of coming up now. Is there anything we can do to just, you know, fix that while we wait?
I think you've just informed the proper personnel, not only myself, but also D P W. I just mean that we will look at that.
It just started to, like, it was okay and then it started to really pop up, so I thought that'd be a little dangerous. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Kibble.
Kind of on that same thing, the, uh, the the landing when you're heading west on that that same path. Uh, there, it's pretty precipitous there, you know, it's not a good transition from surface to surface.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Uh, to address, uh, Linda's inquiry, uh, over there on McCady Park, is it possible to put in those, um, cement bumpers, they're they're cylindrical? And 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 put those in in a radius or whatever that can be removed if you need to get in there? But at least they're there. I know they work and if a car hits it, they're gonna wreck their car.
I will be talking to Chief about it. I put a note here also, because if you're gonna be putting barricades up, then you're also gonna have to put advance signs regarding turnaround, so they're not turning it around in businesses or the residents, so we want to get all of that done at the same time.
All right, thanks for the update, Paul. Move on to council comments tonight. And I can't remember what end I started at last week, so we're gonna start with you, Councilmember Dil.
All right, thank you. Um, just a couple of things. Um, obviously, uh, I just want to say how excited I am for, uh, South Lion. There's been so many things going on. Uh, so many different events and I just really appreciate and want to thank everybody who's done anything to plan any of these. Because it's been really wonderful, I think, to see so many people out and about in South Lion. And, uh, you know, the the ladies' night, the, um, the farmer's market, the police and fire, just so much going on. Obviously, the, um, car show's coming. Um, it's just really great and it's really, uh, appreciate the, uh, businesses who are trying to do some things outdoors and really get a a lot more, um, people moving around and being outside in South Lion. It's been great. Um, I want to thank Sharon for giving us her update from the, uh, from Active Faith. That'll be really, I I look forward to that every month and that'll be, um, uh, a great thing to hear. I think people in the community need to know, uh, just how much you guys are doing. Appreciate that. Um, and then the other thing, last thing I was gonna say is I had the opportunity to, uh, I was asked to judge two different organizations, um, scholarship essays for, um, our seniors. And I know a lot of times people shake their fists, you know, kids these days, but I I'll say, you know, kids these days are amazing. Um, I just wanted to put it out there, that reading these essays are are some of the most, uh, uplifting and, uh, it makes me very hopeful for the future. Uh, just amazing, amazing kids that we're we're putting out there, so, um, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dil. Councilmember Hanson.
So I'm not gonna steal any of, uh, Mr. Kennedy's thunder for the, uh, car show that's coming up on Wednesday, so I'll leave that to him, but um, I would like to mention an event that's really coming up real quick. Um, Touch a Truck, uh, is happening on June fourteenth at eleven AM at the Salem South Lion Library. Uh, the kid and me is hoping that the ladder truck will be there. No, no pressure, Chief, no pressure. Additionally, uh, coming up in August, August nineteenth, Fury for Feast at Witches Hat that is benefiting, um, Blessings in a Backpack, the local chapter as well as Active Faith, um, so I'm hoping that we have even more of a turnout than we've had in the past. I mean, so far, this is the, it'll be the eleventh year, uh, they've donated a hundred and seven thousand dollars to local, uh, organizations and, uh, gathered more than twelve thousand pounds of food, so not only are we hoping to see some great food and great bands play, but also some great, um, beers made by our own brewery here in town, so. I hope to see y'all out there and, uh, I'll defer the rest of my time.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate all the young adults who were awarded certificates, uh, this morning at the, uh, South Lion Area Assistance Program. Uh, some of the individuals in the audience, Sharon, you were there. Uh, just a a great, great opportunity to see the young students, uh, in our community and the incredible contributions they are making to our community. The the these children were, they weren't, they're children, they're young adults, were awarded predominantly, uh, for their incredible, uh, community work that they were engaged in and what they have done. And what I was really surprised about was how many of them were active with their churches. So I thought that was just a really good blend to see. Uh, they did a great, great job and I want to thank Saint Joe's for hosting the event. That was wonderful of them to provide their facilities. They provided not only the, uh, lunchroom area for them to have breakfast, but also into the church itself for the actual presentation, so thank you, Saint Joe's. Um, I am gonna mention a little bit about, uh, Lake Street Cruising, because that's one of my favorite events and, um, I'll be talking about the sponsors throughout the summer, but that does start this Wednesday. Uh, starting around six o'clock, uh, the weather's supposed to be good, so let's get out there and see these incredible cars. They do a great job and it's really a lot of fun to bring your kids. Uh, additionally, I want to welcome officially Jodea Bodella Homes to downtown South Lion. Jody, uh, I just have to laugh, um, any money that I made at my garage sale last week, you know where it's coming. And it's coming right into your store, because I'm sure there's thousands of things in your store that I could just absolutely buy tonight and tomorrow and the rest of the week. So thank you for coming to South Lion. I know it was a lot of work for you and I think this is your third move in, I don't know, about a year, year and a half, so I know it's been a lot of work and a lot of stress, so, um, your feet are here, uh, glad to have you. And, uh, last, uh, everybody have a great, safe, uh, Memorial Weekend and let's remember what Memorial Weekend is all about. It's not about you, it's about our young men and women and our veterans that served our country and served our country well and um, all those individuals that stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. Uh, they did a great job defending it, so thank you, ladies and gentlemen of our military.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I want to remind everybody that the first Lake Street Cruising of the season will take place Wednesday. It starts at six-thirty in downtown South Lion. So make plans to head downtown for something to eat and drink, enjoy the music and see some great cars. And, uh, also, uh, on Tuesday night this week, Brad Heiss from Comerica Bank will be providing notary services at the Salem South Lion District Library. So if you need something notarized, bring a photo ID, stop by and see him. No appointment is required. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Moser.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have much to add, other than then a great summer coming up with a lot of good events, starting next week with our Cruising and then don't forget the farmer's market every Saturday. So other than that, everybody have a good week.
Thank you. Councilmember Kibble.
Uh, my wife and I were just kind of walking around through town and and our kids live in town now, so it it's really very special to us and having everybody so close and we're, we can lean on each other and, you know, uh, parties for birthdays and all that kind of stuff with the grandkids and that. But what a, uh, just a lovely community we live in. The more you walk around, the more you really understand how well we live here. Uh, you don't have to be rich or anything. We're we're so rich in just assets that you get to take advantage of um, just as a, uh, a resident here. I, it's just we're, it's just ridiculously cool to live here, so. Um, and and things are getting better, you know, uh, there's an awful lot of communities that are really struggling to try to make ends meet. And, you know, we're not rich, but we're we're very responsible and we're making things happen in a reasonable way to keep all of our facilities up and running and, uh, to help us have that quality of life. And I'm just tickled to death that, um, things are going as well as they are. Um, and the Memorial Day thing is really going to be cool. Um, I'm assuming, are you putting the the ladder up with the flag? So that'll end up being a real treat for the community as well, so that's really all I had, but I I'm I'm really happy that we have it as good as we do.
No, that's a great reminder, Councilmember Kibble, with the summer season coming up and if you maybe haven't done as much exploring in town as Councilmember Kibble, I'm, you know, encourage you to do so, so. Um, I just have a couple of things. I I want to piggyback off Councilmember Dil. Um, I love it when you're able to remind me of stuff. You know, I sat in on mock interviews last week out at South Lion East High School and you're absolutely right. Uh, you know, these kids are very impressive. Um, I sat down with a young lady, uh, that is looking to go into politics or to be a lawyer. I was seeing two fine lawyers that we know in this room right now and then, uh, this other young man is, uh, gonna go and and be an aviator and I was just like, kudos to you guys, just very, very sharp, very on top of it. I was, it was a joy to take part in. I'll be out at South Lion High School this week on Wednesday doing the same thing. Um, I get as much joy out of it as the kids do, um, just to hear what people are gonna go and try and do with their lives, so. Um, I do have a a little reminder for our friends over at the American Legion. Their annual golf outing will be Saturday, July fifteenth this year, out at the lovely Rolling Meadows Golf Course. Um, if you have any interest, please contact myself or our friend, uh, Denny Whatkey over at the American Legion Post three-three-eight and I'll keep reminding us as we go through the summer, as we're getting closer to that. Um, and then also about the Memorial Day Parade. Man, if you haven't been, you gotta get out there. The weather's supposed to be good this week. Um, I know, um, those involved with the planning have been really working hard to to, um, you know, kind of grow the event and it's something the community should be very proud of because it's a dying event in other communities, so, uh, we should be very proud of it. I know I will be. Um, I look forward to seeing everybody out there. It's, like I said, the weather's supposed to be really good, knock on wood, I know we're in Michigan. But, um, so I would encourage everyone to come out. It's not a super long thing. Um, the VFW does hot dogs. I know we ran out at the event on Saturday. I'll warn them to be ready, but, um, with that, I just hope everyone has a safe holiday weekend and, uh, like Councilmember Kurtzwell said, you know, you need to remember the reason for the holiday, but, uh, you know, we'd love to see you out downtown South Lion on Monday for sure. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Move to adjourn.
Have a great night, all.